Main and pathway discussion. So, gentlemen, how are you today?
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Fletcher, Board members. Thanks for your time. If you give me just a moment, I'm going to share my screen here so I can share the presentation.
I was gonna say, did you flip a coin to see who gets to sit, who has to stand up for the presentation?
Well, I didn't expect direct to stand, but if he wants to. We've also got our consultants, Tetra Tech Gary Markstrom is here. You've already seen Gary before for the wastewater plant. And then Jill Butterbaugh with ORC. You'll hear about her in just a moment. Okay. There we go. So tonight, we wanted to give you an update on the St. Joe Highway easement acquisition process. It's kind of a big initiative and kind of we're at a launching off point for kind of the next phase of that. So we wanted to kind of bring, bring this for you, get some buy-in. You know, as we present our next, our next step hopefully soon. Apologize, there's a lot of text on these slides, but a lot to, to kind of recap. So we'll just try to hit on the high points since you've had them in your packets. So just some history. Back in 2017, December, the end of 2017, we completed our water system reliability plan. That identified the water main on St. Joe Highway between Waverly and Crates is in need of replacement and is a high priority project. The image there on the right shows the five and 10-year capital improvement project lists where we included those. So we've identified, we've known since then that we've needed to, to tackle the replacement of those old eight-inch and 10-inch mains. Next, back in 2019, we, we worked with Tetra Tech to really start to study that water main replacement and we actually completed a preliminary design. Just so we could figure out where that should go, where that should be located in relation to the road and sidewalks and existing water main. And it identified that the new route would be outside the road surface paralleling the existing main. In conjunction of that, we also did, had worked with Tetra Tech to do a non-motorized facility study. Previously, the, the non-motorized plan identified some bike lanes or possibly a road diet on St. Joe. We took a very systematic approach to that and rule, actually ruled out bike lanes on that road due to traffic volumes and other considerations. Came back with a recommendation actually for a shared use pathway in those areas and laid out kind of four segments. You know, differing priority level and cost and difficulty in building. But certainly it's in the same general area from Crates to Waverly that we're talking about with the water main. So we start to see, we start to have this overlap between these two, two projects. We brought the results of those to you as a board in February of 2020, right before COVID hit. And identified that we had the opportunity to combine the water main replacement in the shared use pathway projects, but also the challenge of needing 33 easements in that stretch to be able to pull these projects off. And then lastly, in, in fall of last year, about this time, you know, we started looking at a 21, 2021 budget. And we actually had included $150,000 to begin work in 2021 of easements, obtaining these easements. That's kind of the background. In terms of why the, just kind of why this project makes a lot of sense. As I said, water main is failing. It's on the plan to, for our water system reliability. Locating outside the road makes a lot of sense for the durability of the new pipe. And it's actually our standard for, for water main construction. When you replace that water main, there's going to be a lot of disruption to the ground surface, which include removing sidewalks that are in place in a lot of those areas. So part of the water main reconstruction would include putting those sidewalks back, restoring the area in the way we found it. So to start to have to add five additional feet of sidewalk width starts to make a lot of sense in terms of cost and efficiency in order to accomplish a pathway. Some of the benefits of pathways include, you know, township providing maintenance and snow plowing of pathways. We, we've got the equipment to do that. We maintain a fair amount of pathway currently, which is a added benefit to the property owners that live along the pathway. In terms of connectivity, it would connect to the new Waverly Road pathway, which we had the ribbon cutting on earlier this year, and to the pathway on Snow Road, which connects to the Waverly Schools and up to Michigan. So there's certainly a lot of benefit to the Waverly Schools, all the walkers and safety, including, you know, that area had a pedestrian death and recent history. It's also, you know, it's a pretty bold undertaking in this scale. It's two miles. And, but it does check off a couple of strategic plan discussion points on really the community connectivity and infrastructure. So the easement acquisition process, as I said, 33 easements are required. We need to make sure we can obtain those easements so that we can finalize designs, secure, secure permits and obtain bids without having the project change, you know, due to unwilling property owner late in the game. So this has been really the next step that we need to take before we can really get serious about having a good firm timeline on getting this thing built. Just based on my history, easement acquisitions are difficult and usually time-consuming process. We've had some recent projects with easement acquisition. Old River Trail pathway there by Hunter's Orchard Park across the Carrier Creek. We just needed one easement. We worked for more than 12 months with that property owner to get, to get that nailed down. And that was, that was an amiable discussion, but it just a lot of back and forth, a lot of time. You're all familiar with St. Joe Sidewalk, Countryside Point West. That's been several years and we're still having issue with one, one unwilling property owner. And then recently you've also heard about the Carrier Creek sewer repair. We have secured one. We still have three pending. And, you know, we're, we've been working on those for about six months already. So it, it just takes time to, to get through this process. So like I said, lots of time, something of this scope's going to take a highly systematic public education process. You know, we may do the best job we can perfectly do and still end up with a handful that, that, that don't want to accept an offer. And so then while some decisions regarding condemnation that, you know, similar to what we've seen lately. The big thing is we just don't, you know, we don't have the time as from a staff to dedicate to 33 easements. You know, it takes a lot of effort to get two or three or four. So you can imagine 33, we just need some more horsepower to get this done. So from an acquisition assistance standpoint, Tetra Tech can help. Your Markstrom has been the project manager for both the, the non-motorized study as well as water main preliminary design. So, and as well as obtaining the topographical surveys. So he'll assist with that project management and coordination piece and also the legal surveys that we need to do. So we have topographical surveys, but now we need to go back and do legal boundary surveys to be able to, to write these descriptions. Probably the next piece of the puzzle is an easement acquisition consultant. And so Jill is here representing ORC. They're a firm that specializes in property management or property and easement acquisition for these types of projects, infrastructure for, for local, state and federal government. That's, I believe that's all you guys do. So I mean, it's, it's, it's their world. They would act as a sub-consultant to Tetra Tech, helping with title circuit searches, market value studies, making the owner contacts, conducting negotiations and getting signatures and recording easements. So it's a lot of turnkey assistance until they had a point where someone just won't cooperate. And then we'll, we'll have to get involved potentially in, in legal, you know, like we would on any of them ourselves. But hopefully they're going to deliver 32 out of 33 or four. I will promise you that. Yeah. But they're really, you really kind of take us all the way through the step to the point where these things are getting done. I'll pause there. Gary or Jill, anything I left out in terms of how you guys will help us through this? So kind of overall costs going forward, you know, we projected some water main costs to do that in the three and a half to $4 million range for that two-mile segment. The pathway at about a million and a half in that, in that same segment. And so right now, you know, we had the 150,000 budget for the easement acquisition. We, through reaching out with Tetra Tech and ORC, obtaining their proposal for their efforts, we're looking at about 185 for just the consulting services. It was about $5,600 a parcel. That doesn't include paying these property owners for, you know, their five-foot of land across the front of their property or whatever it works out to be. So those, those costs aren't in here. So our costs are certainly escalating from the, the, kind of the budgeted number that we had. So going forward, if you want to pursue this, we're going to have some additional dollars. But overall, it's still a relatively small portion of the project cost when you look at, you know, five and a half, $6 million of the infrastructure that you got to build. So, but I want to be, you know, transparent. That's where we're at currently with our costs. So if you look at, if you try to think about alternatives, you know, they're, they're not great. You know, installing the water main in the road surface, you know, not, not ideal, not the best long-term location. So most disruptive to travel and, and, you know, the road surface itself. So, you know, if push comes to shove, you couldn't get an easement, you had to go in the road. Certainly it's doable, but your costs, your costs are going to go up to do that. So that starts to offset, you know, what you put into trying to obtain these easements. Now motorized side, if you don't build a pathway, you know, you, you still are going to need easements for water main. You might make the argument that someone would be more willing to give an easement for something that's buried and out of sight. But I don't know that that's a guarantee. And, and so at the end of the day, then you end up, because you can't do a road diet, you're getting a non, non, non-motorized facility there other than your five-foot wide sidewalks you've got. So in either scenario, it's not desirable. I think the, the cost of taking on these easement acquisitions, you know, is going to pay off in the, in the long run if we can get there. So just some other things to think about. You know, we don't, I don't think as a staff have a good idea of what the public perception of the, of the project will be. You know, we're going to work with this team to, to craft that message, tell the story, you know, what the benefits are. But, you know, it could be deemed by some residents to be undesirable, whether it's the pathway or the disruption or whatever it is. You know, they're going to want, you know, maybe we'll just put it in the road, out of the way type of attitude. So we don't, we don't really know that yet, but that'll, I'm sure flush out when we start making knocks on doors.
Yeah, it'll flush out a lot, we're certain.
And the, the timing of all this is, is an unknown. We're guessing, you know, maybe six to 12 months and we really need to get through and know where, where all of these properties stand before we can really, you know, finalize a design and go out to bid, which will then set the kind of the construction timeline. And then of course, if, you know, if we just have some refusals and decisions to make about condemnation, if, you know, a reasonable or desirable engineering alternative doesn't exist. And finally, I would say we have been open in talking to the road commission about this process, this kind of plan, of what we'd like to pursue and timing of the projects. And we'll just have to continue to coordinate that. With it being outside the road right now, our, our design doesn't have a lot of impact on the road. And we hope to keep it that way because they're kind of moving forward with their own plans for road resurfacing and, and whatnot. So, but we'll continue to talk to them if, if, if there's some opportunity to, to make things coordinate on a project level. We'll certainly, certainly do that. So at the end, end of the day, our staff recommendations is going to be to award a contract to Tetra Tech and ORC as a sub-consultant to help us with this acquisition. Because it's a new venture, you know, for the township, something of the scale and this magnitude. We, that's why I want to bring it tonight in the community whole, so you don't necessarily, you could give us some feedback or hopefully get some buy-in. And then if you want to proceed, we can bring it back next week with actual contracts in order to move forward. And then as we, if that's the case, we'd also look at budgeting additional funds in 2022 to, to continue to fund this, this effort. And then in terms of timing, you know, we'd work with the consultants to get our kind of project messaging solidified so that, you know, we have our best foot forward in terms of telling the story of the project in, in, in a really good light. And then hopefully get, get kicked off here this fall and see where it leads. And hopefully, hopefully this time next year, you know, this phase of the project is, is behind us. And maybe we're looking at, you know, the, the following spring or something to build something. But that's kind of where we're at today. So with that, I'll be quiet and take any questions and have a helpful answer questions.
Sure, Mary. I have a few. So help me understand, the pathway cost of 1.5 million estimated does or does not include the easement, the 5,600 per property, so that 185,000? And then what we pay homeowners, which I'm assuming we're not paying more for the, to get the easement, then we're going to pay for the easement, which means we're also looking at a similar 185,000 or more for an actual easement payment?
So we had some dollars. I don't think I have them in front of me, unfortunately. We had some dollars in our estimates for easement acquisition. I want to say they were in this ballpark of 150,000.
Yeah, it was three or five.
So I, I think we're probably, you know, going to double that by the time you have the consultant help and the easement help.
Okay.
You know, we, you know, we had some dollars in there, but they're a little bit placeholder.
Okay, so another half million, let's just say rounding generously.
I would hope that they don't approach a half a million. No.
Well, we're looking at nearly 400,000 if all goes well. So based on these figures here, so I'm just asking then that would get added. So the pathway would be in the neighborhood of, let's say, 1.75 million. Okay, is what total? When you talk about the construction plus the acquisitions, then I, I, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just trying to be clear.
It's, so when we studied these two projects, we, we put down costs for water main project and we put down costs for pathway project. And then there's a, there's some overlap between them. And so when we put backs five-foot of sidewalk for the, for the water main, it's almost like we, we estimated them if they were done separately in a bubble by themselves. But in reality, they're going to be combined. And so there's some efficiencies that probably don't flush out in the numbers that, from the study. So to build a water main underneath a sidewalk, you'd put back five-foot of sidewalk. To build five-foot more width, you're going to spend probably the million and a half that we had. So I can't, I can't massage those numbers to tell you how close. I think we're conservative, given that we're going to build the, build the pathway on top of the water main.
Okay. And then I also want to be clear because when we did St. Joe, just the, the milling and resurfacing or crack and seal, whatever they call that, quick fix job that they did on St. Joe, we knew that we were buying time to get this project operational so that, because we cannot, in my opinion, dig up a new road. Because nothing makes people crazier, rightfully so. So I'm assuming we're in at least close to the same flow with the road commission because I believe they were talking then 10 years, which five or six of them are already gone. Trying to remember the time. Rick, do you remember we had this conversation? Because I think Tom was still here.
Yeah, it was when Tom was director, but we obviously missed the far east end of it. But that was a little big push to, to not miss the, between crates and snow. But I have not heard a definite timeframe that they're actually going to pave that section of road. But that's important for us to get out in front of that, to make sure we are in front of that.
So we've had ongoing discussions. We meet quarterly with the road commission. They know that we're, are after this, but our drawings, the way the, the water main is currently laid out keeps, keeps them out of the road.
So we don't have to touch the existing pipe. We will just shut it off, leave it in place.
We'll probably have to fill it with a flowable fill, but.
Yeah, but we can do that from.
Yes. The only thing we'll need to get into the road is to make certain connections at period sections. So we will be in, in locations, but it won't be a full rip out.
And most of those locations are side streets. They're actually kind of in the radiuses of the side streets, not in, in the St. Joe travel lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
And to your point on the, the road commission, I mean, they're pushing ahead. They, they've indicated they may resurface another stretch of St. Joe yet this year. But they had doubts whether they could get it done with their contractor. You know, that's a little hit, miss whether or not it'll happen this fall. But it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to wait for our water main project.
Thank you, Ken. Just a couple of questions and thought. I, I like that it's a working smart project. If we're going to be doing one thing, let's do something else at the same time. And we have talked about this before, certainly since I've been on the board. So I, I think it's a, a good move to make. I know those easements, getting those 33 easements, God bless you, Jill. I'm praying for you right now. I would ask though, if it's possible, before there's community engagement and you're going out and you're working with these 33 residents, that we be informed because sometimes we're the ones that get the call or the email from residents so that we're on the same page with the talking points. So we can help with the process, but I, I'm very much in support of it. And I, and safety is key to me. I knew Jasmine Miles, who was killed on that street. Her mother is my best friend. So anything we can do to make things safer and creating that pathway is good work, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments from Trustee Brewer because a lot of them were along the same lines that I was thinking. Additionally, I had some questions as Mary was talking about some of the costs and going over those numbers. And just wondered how, being that we're combining these two very different projects, and I agree, absolutely makes sense. And it's, you know, a lot of efficiencies and just value in both projects, but efficiencies doing those together. But was just wondering what the cost, because I think there are different funds that potentially would pay for different pieces of that project. And, and how, and some of that may, you know, may come out of funds that are rate support, that are restricted to those purposes. So have you started looking at that, a kind of allocating, or is that a little premature to figure out? And at the end of the day, is this bonded? Is it, is it a SRF loan? Is, I, I don't know where that source is, what the thoughts are on that? And is there a way to bring that all together at the end of the day financing, given they're very different types of projects?
Sure. I, I think we're a little early into it, but I mean, in general, you know, if you're going to do a water project that's paid with water funds, you know, you dig, dig a hole, you got to restore the surface. And so in my, in my history, you know, road water fund, product, water funds have give, you know, taken, paid for the road restoration or sidewalk restoration driveways. That's part of doing the road, you know, doing the, the water project. My approach would probably be to start to separate it along the lines of maybe the additional width. And so, and so maybe the, the water fund carries, you know, what, what would have been just the, just a sidewalk replacement and then the water, you know, the non-motorized component is separated out. In terms of funding, I don't know that we've gotten that far. I, I know that our, our water fund is a healthy balance to say that we want to spend that much out of it. I would leave it to Courtney and Brian to, to tell me that.
We did, we did with the rate, the rate study that we did mainly focused on the wastewater, but we did have our consultants look at the water reliability plan. So I believe that most of the projects we can, we can handle out of the water fund. So as a project moves along, depending, we can always take a look at it. But I think the assumption is now to fund that out of cash, the water fund, which is our healthiest fund.
Appreciate that. And I know it was getting a little head, but it just kind of got some wheels, you know, just churning a little bit, thinking about kind of those pieces and how that might come together eventually and come before us. Two last, two other points. You mentioned requesting funding in the 22 budget. So are you saying there aren't resources needed to get the consultant work started this fall? And it sounds like that actually starts before this fall, if, if that moves, this all moves forward.
We've got dollars allocated for, to get them started. Yeah. And we'll, we'll, I think we'll be pretty close. It'll be probably, depending on how many we start paying, the homeowner payments would be whether or not we need to adjust something for 21 or not.
Okay. And then I just want to add a comment, you know, indicating my support for the hiring of the consultants as well, both what, what's been proposed, but the hiring of the consultants. You know, I know in our strategic planning, we were, you know, made very aware of all the things on your plates and, and all the work that you're managing and recognize this is a huge project. And rather than putting more on you, I, I think it's cost-effective and efficient and a good use of, of our resources to dedicate to some, to the outside support for this work. So.
Thanks, Ernie. Staff, it's a good presentation. Think you've laid out the benefits, the challenges, but also the strategic plan into a proposed project, as we've talked about doing in our strategic planning session last time. My understanding, our colon is pretty darn good at what you do. Okay? And I just was curious, and I know all municipalities are different, but you've done this in surrounding communities.
Yes.
And what, just anecdotally, would you expect in this case in Delta Township?
As far as like participation?
Well, the difficulty, maybe the, the average price per easement.
It really is going to depend honestly on the size of the easement, you know, the size of each land. You know, some, we, some may only take a little part, some may take a longer piece of their land. So they, it will vary from, you know, from. So they, it will vary from ti, you know, from, from place to place. Um, I know that we did kind of do a preliminary cost estimate when we submitted our proposals and they get an idea and they just, they were all over the place. Again, depending on, on the size of the parcel that we're taking and how much of it. So it, it's, it's hard to say, um, what the, the average cost would be for that.
Yeah, um, just two or three examples of pathway projects you've done in the area?
Um, I'm currently working, well, it's not necessarily in this area, but it's out in Fenton. I'm currently working on a pathway project for Silver Lake Road. Um, where there, we are taking, doing 18 easements, helping them get them for a pathway project along Silver Lake Road. For the same thing, and it's to connect Linden and Silver and Fenton together. That's the current one. Um, we have other proposals in for pathway projects right now, but nothing currently that we're working on.
Done nothing in the, uh, general Lansing tri-county area?
Uh, not recently.
Okay, okay. So keep in mind, there's already an e, partial easement already with where the sidewalk is, is that correct, Ernie?
Uh, the sidewalk, I believe are all located in the right of way.
In the right of way. So we would be going from that original five foot and then going another theoretically five foot into.
Well, the right of way is, is, you know, the road, roadway, we're public road right of way, which allows a sidewalk to be built. This would be probably, I don't know, Gary, you remember, we're five to 10 feet wide.
Our, our easements are ranging from, you know, five feet of, of land to, you know, 15, 20 feet of land, depending on. The right of way is not a straight line going down St. Joe. It's been kind of created over the years, so it kind of jogs in and out.
Okay.
We're trying to put a straight path, try and put a straight water main in there. So we don't have a lot of bends and such in there. And, uh, and to do so, we got to straighten out some of that right. And some will be a little wider.
Sure.
But most of the, the, the nice thing about, you know, part of the presentation to the homeowners and such is this is land that is in like setbacks, front yard setbacks, those kinds of things. So as far as usable to them besides being their lawn and maybe some shrubs and such in, in there, uh, it's not an area that they can build it, their rest of the house or add on to their house and put in there. So hopefully that helps soften the blow a little bit to everybody.
Snow removal might be a.
And snow will be, will be a big one, so they don't have to shovel their walk and, and they'll call the township to come shovel their walk.
It might have been a sweeter to put a pathway for the, uh, the Point West property owner that we're having difficulty with. As far as the funding though, I'm believing that, um, if we take it out of general fund, you know, we, we're able to secure, you know, a sizable amount of money residual from the franchise fee. So if that's spent over a number of years in this project, um, that would be a, um, I think a wise use of those monies in whole or in part. But I appreciate your thought process on that. And my last comment would be, I remember being on the board eight years ago and there was a significant number of bicycles that were clamming for some way of getting a bicycle laying down St. Joe. And of course, the road commission says, no, no, you know, can't do it, name of other room and all that. So it was sort of discussed that eventually this water main was going to have to be dealt with. And there may be an opportunity to do that as an alternative. So, you know, to me, that's a continuation of, of those types of acknowledgements with our residents that we had before and a way to make that happen. Not the least that with one small little remaining connection on the Lansing Township side of the line, that would be a connection to the Lansing Regional River Trail into Delta Township. So, thank you.
Great, well, thanks. Well, I certainly support the, uh, project and everything and moving forward. So definitely want to see it. But one of the good things about longevity, uh, is you, you see things. And I think other than Rick, I think I'm the only one here on the board, uh, or anybody who's in the room that was with the township when the, uh, 10-foot pathway was proposed for Kreis Road. And this room was jam packed with people for meeting after meeting. They hired attorneys, uh, and the end compromise was to do, divide it up and not do a 10-foot one, uh, down one side of the road. So I think everybody needs to just get yourself ready for what we're going to be in for as they start knocking on doors. People will not want a 10-foot pathway in the front yard. Uh, out of these 33 easements, uh, I think you're going to have quite a few that you're going to be fighting to get, which means we all are going to have to be willing to start condemning properties in our business because they turned out in droves and we didn't even need. I, I think that we only needed like one or two easements for the Kreis Road one. And people who lived across the street who wasn't going to have anything in their yard was paying money for the attorney to fight us to put it in. So I, I 10-foot pathway in people's yards set them off more than a sidewalk, more than other types of work will do. So I just want everybody to be kind of prepared for what's going to come down the road and after they sit, knocks on the door start.
There is a good mix of business and residential easements that we need to acquire. So it's just not all, we did all residential or business, it's a pretty good mix.
But it would be helpful, the businesses would be far easier than what residents would be.
Yeah, and I will add, you know, the, the benefit of building this water main outside the roadway is a huge impact for longevity for us. A good example of the sagging highway hole that we had to put in just three weeks ago, is a valve box in the road and all the salt and debris goes down that valve box, rots the, the bolts on the valve away. And, and we had a failure. So you get that outside the roadway, you don't have all that debris making contact with the water main along with all the frost and traffic impacts. So it, it's a huge benefit for us to get the water main outside such a busy roadway for longevity and really the maintenance and, and, you know, looking down the road 20, 30 years to keep from having those main, main breaks and additional expenses that you really can't put in, you know. We do monitor those costs and you'd be surprised, uh, 20, 30 years with a main breaks, uh, St. Joe, we've already had 50 plus. And that's before we start counting them. I think 91 or 96 is when we started keeping a better record to actually how many main breaks we have had in, in the cost for each main break. So.
And Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that some of our oldest water main?
Yes, there's, there's good, it's, it's cast iron all the way from Waverly to Stowe. And it does go to ductile iron after, uh, west of Stowe. But again, that's unwrapped ductile iron in our Delta soils are very aggressive soils for, uh, metal.
Thank you, John. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number three, the 2021 IFT compliance report Ted.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. Real quick, uh, in front of you in your packet is the 2021 annual IFT compliance report or industrial facility tax report. The purpose of the audit is to have the businesses report, uh, the number of employees that they had on a specific date. And we compare that number to their original IFT application to see if they in fact have retained or hired as many employees as they predicted they would. So we currently have eight businesses that are in our, uh, that have active IFTs. And I put together a spreadsheet as I have the last three or four years in your packet. This year, seven out of eight of them have reported, uh, more employees than what they had expected. So that's fantastic. One of them fell short, uh, and that's Magna. And frankly, their, um, reason, if you will, is because they're a auto supplier and the chip shortage and things like that. So they'd be more than happy to have another 80 employees if they had the work for them, but they currently can't because the shutdowns and intermittent work and that sort of thing. So, uh, that in general is all that I have. And on the last page, I did give you, I call it a, a graph or a chart, if you will. And it shows the eight businesses, the number of employees they pledged, and then a four-year bar chart, if you will, showing how many employees they had each year. And, um, and again, this year shows pretty good results. One qualifier I know that's come up in the past is, hey, are they regular full-time employees, part-time employees, temporary, seasonals, whatever? Uh, so we asked that question. And four of these businesses do say that they use a temp agency, if you will, to hire employees for them. And those folks that work out and make the cut, if you will, become full-time employees. So it's kind of their hiring agency to get people. So they kind of filter through them that way. So, uh, that's my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great questions.
Thank you. Ted, you know, I love this report every year.
Thank you.
When you do it, I absolutely love it. And I thank the businesses for doing a really good job during a tough, tough year with COVID. So the 79 positions that were below, I, I totally get that. Um, and I appreciate the data, but I want to just make sure that I'm clear because we talk about this every year, I think I usually raise this, is these numbers reflect any temporary employees who were, who are now hired as of the date of this report?
In here would be, um, four of these businesses, they'll call them full-time employees. However, they still, because I make them give me an employee register. These are your full-time, I'm getting benefits, I'm getting everything. These are my seasonals, I don't count those at all. These are my temps, they're going to be a short term, don't count them at all. Then they have another pool of temp full-time in the pool that they intend on hiring if they're the right fit for the job. So those are included in the number for four of them as full-time employees.
And do we know how many, like, is it a smaller number of this greater?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's small. Yeah.
Cause that's what I try to capture every year.
In the five to 10% range of their employees, for sure. And they would, again, it's kind of their screening process, if you will.
A lot of companies use it. Yeah, it's a, it's a good tool.
Sure.
I just wanted to see if these numbers on this particular snapshot date included just the ones that are employees on the roster and not temp agency.
Yep.
But it sounds like some four have some temp agency employees that they're strongly considering.
Correct, that's true.
To hire. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So now the pledged 502 and the, the one employer that's below their pledge, is that the pledge for just this year? Or has that been their pledge overall? Because it seems like they haven't gotten over 500 at all.
That is their pledge the whole time.
Okay.
Correct.
So this is an ongoing problem, not just.
They're, let me get to here, because they go back. Yeah, like, like 2014-ish or so, when they first came on, they were much higher. And then it's kind of done that, but you're right, the last four years, they have not made it.
So, um, what are the ramifications of that? Is that something that we should renegotiate with them or?
That is up to you all, frankly. I mean, the agreement with each of these businesses says that you do have the right to revoke it if you wanted to. I mean, you could go so far, but it does also have a clause in there. Unless there are reasonable circumstances why they didn't obtain those 79 employees. And these days, they probably could make a pretty good argument, I suppose.
Yeah, with the chip shortage, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ted? Great, thank you. Good report. Appreciate it. Anybody have anything final?
Ken, I just wanted to say, a really good meeting. I love having the updates from the committees that some of the board members sit on. Um, so I appreciate you bringing this data back to the table. Thank you.
Anything else? Say no further business before we are adjourned.